I call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, April 26, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderman at Large, Michael B. O'Brien, Sr., will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, please state your presence, reason for not attending the meeting in person, and whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting which is required under the right to no law. Would you please call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Moran. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemens. Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Camau.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Wilshere.
Here.
You have 12 in attendance.
Thank you. I'm going to take a moment here to request a moment of silence for former Alderwoman Lou and her husband Matt Plant, the police commissioner, who lost their son at 33 years old. So if we could rise and just have a moment of silence. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Donches and Deputy Corporation Counsel Lori Clark. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. First, I wanted to give you some news on the affordable housing front. The property of 249 Main Street, which is down south of City Hall, a few buildings, there's the Caribbean Restaurant, then Hollis Street, and then two buildings, and there's an empty parking lot there with fence around it, kind of an eyesore for a number of years. That has been acquired by Neighbor Works, and they have obtained a financing commitment from the Hampshire Housing Finance Authority, and their intention is to build 30-plus units of affordable housing on that site. If you know Neighbor Works, they operate St. Casimir, they have about 40 units here in Nashua and many more in Manchester. They are a very quality operator and owner of affordable housing units, participate and are involved in the neighborhoods that they own in, and therefore, we expect that to go forward sometime probably next year, but their acquisition of that parcel is certainly good news. Thank you, everyone who attended the public hearing and the meeting last night on the paving. We put forward the second five years of a 10-year paving plan. We have improved over five years the quality of Nashua streets considerably as measured by the PCI, the Paving Condition Index, but we need to continue because the image of the community, the expectation of our residents, and really just people's quality of life is affected by the character of our infrastructure, especially including our streets. So I expect that to be coming forward for your vote next time. In your packet, there is a report regarding the Elm Street Middle School Community Input Meeting, which occurred back on the 11th. A lot of people participated. It was very interesting. People had various opinions. Obviously, many people feel strongly about the Elm Street building, which, of course, originally was a high school. The different opinions, but the clearest message was that people want us to save the Keefe Auditorium as part of whatever we decide to do with the building, and of course, I think everyone here is committed to that as well. So there will be more discussions of that building and its future in a short time. We discussed last meeting the absence of a third member of the Board of Registars, which with Alderwoman Cle's help, we were able to locate a very enthusiastic and willing nominee. His name is Bill Grady, and he will come before you, or his nomination will come on the agenda next time, but I think you'll find him a very qualified and capable member of the Board of Registars. And finally, Madam President, I like to, our small business community is important because it creates many jobs, and it's where a lot of growth occurs. Many entrepreneurs support themselves, their families, and those of their employees. I had the opportunity to talk with the owner of Sub-Zero, which is an ice cream store that located down on Main Street, a few blocks from here. He said, and they had been previously on Amherst Street, he said he's very glad to have moved downtown. They're doing very well, and he's seeking to, has already opened a couple of other stores in other cities and is seeking to open some more. So it's very nice to see an entrepreneur who started out here in Nashua doing well, not only in his current, in our location, but in his other locations as well. And that is all I have for you tonight, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Response to the remarks of the mayor. Alderman Lopez.
Just for clarification, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the direction of 249 Main Street being past the Caribbean Breeze, but the site you're talking about is directly across from CVS and is literally a vacant lot?
Correct.
Just wanted to confirm for anybody who's listening who might have been a little confused.
Anyone else respond to the remarks of the mayor? Seeing none. Recognition period. There is none reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of March 21st, March 22nd, and March 28, 2022, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaison.
Four communications have been received from Matt Sullivan, Community Development Director, regarding the referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed ordinance O-2210, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking device sales and lounges. The referral from the Board of Aldermen on proposed petitions by Etchstone Properties, Inc., for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code for Thompson's Preserve Condominium and the Alcove at Walden Woods Condominium, and the FY 2023 Capital Improvement Program. Communications have been received from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding communication on Keefe Auditorium relative to Elm Street Middle School feasibility study, and a communication on paint color for extended outdoor dining. From Alderman John Cathy regarding a special liaison to the Nashua City Planning Board, and from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items to be expected to be acted upon this evening. We have two people that have signed up. Brad Westgate.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. My name is Brad Westgate. I'm a lawyer with Weiner Bennett, 111 Concord Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of Etchstone Properties, the Widmies Day Petropolis of Etchstone Properties, relative to the two petitions before you tonight for waiver of the school impact fee, the capital improvements impact fee for public schools. The petition pertained to two condominium communities Etchstone built, as you noted, the Thompson's Preserve Condominium, 39 single-family detached units, and the Alcove at Walden Woods Condominium off Exit 5, 63 units and a multifamily structure. Madam President, the Land Use Code imposes a school impact fee on new residential construction in Nashua. These are one-time fees paid to the city typically when the developer seeks the certificate of occupancy for the residential unit. They go into a capital reserve fund for the school system. The, I think the board is aware that these impact fees, of course, are in addition to the regular property taxes that the developer and then the homeowner will pay, school, county, city taxes on their regular annual property tax bills. Because certain types of residential development are not likely to generate an impact for capital improvements in the school system, there's a provision in the Land Use Code that allows a petitioner to seek waiver of the public school impact fee, and that's what these petitions are for. These two properties are elderly communities, 55 and older, or housing for older persons as it's known in the city code. With the petitions, we submitted a study by Mark Fugier, Fugier Planning and Development. Mr. Fugier canvassed a number of 55 and older communities in Southern New Hampshire, including four in Nashua, two of which were the ones that are before you tonight, and in his study of approximately 1,036 units, he found that only five school-aged children were residing in these number of communities that he canvassed in Southern New Hampshire. So roughly speaking, he determined about five school-aged students for every thousand or so units. These two before you tonight have no school-aged children per his canvassing. 55 and older communities have to have at least 80% of the units occupied by at least one person who's 55 years of age or older, so the tendency is obvious that they don't tend to generate a need for
30 seconds.
...public school improvements because of the type of demographics that are there. So we ask the board to approve these two petitions tonight. I note that the Planning Board and the Planning and Economic Development Committee both gave favorable recommendations. One side note, the developer can't just willy-nilly, if you will, change the 55 and older designation. These are approved by the Planning Board on that basis. The density was allowed for on that basis, so this is a fixed status that these communities have.
Mr. Westgate, time.
Thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you very much. Lori Ortolano.
Good evening. Lori Ortolano, 41 Berkeley Street. I'm here to address the unfinished business item that you'll be voting on tonight for the Expendable Trust Fund for 14 Court Street. I'm not in favor of this fund because I think that building, it was pitched to the board that the goal is that building will become self-sustaining or profitable and not require this, you know, constant use of taxpayer money, and I happen to believe that that's not the case with 14 Court Street. We're doing a lot for the arts downtown, and the art center that's being built was obviously funded by taxpayer dollars, but on top of that, there's a lease arrangement whereby, I believe for 15 years, taxpayers will be paying a fee to the operation of that building that will go anywhere from a half a million dollars to three-quarters of a million dollars. So taxpayers will be supporting that art center regardless of whether it's profitable or not for a very long period of time. And I think we have to look at what facilities we keep going, like 14 Court Street, that struggles so much as, that requires a lot of cost. That building was always very, very expensive. I agree that the Keefe Auditorium should be maintained at Elm Street, and obviously there's a lot of interest in that, and I'm not certain why we can't transition the few arts programs that are over there using the theater over to Elm Street to use the auditorium over there. It's a much nicer facility. It'll obviously be renovated, and it just seems to me that it would be a much better use of taxpayer dollars. If in fact, Court Street does not contain the fire station lines, north and south lines that I had addressed at one of the board meetings that was rather scoffed at by a few people as not an issue, if those lines are not in there and there's no fire issue with that station associated with 14 Court Street, I don't know why we wouldn't look at letting that go to someone else for development of some kind to turn that into something that wouldn't be such a burden for taxpayers, because that becomes a third arts potential place that we just continue to dump money into that I think is a bottomless pit, and we just want, there will never, that will never be a self-sustaining facility. So I'm not in favor of this expendable trust fund because I just see it as a money pit, and I think what we're doing with the new NPAC and what we're doing with Elm Street with taxpayer dollars is the direction to go in and cut your losses on the white elephants that don't work. Thank you.
I don't see anyone online with their hand up for public comment, so we're going to move on. Communications requiring final approval.
Communication from Mayor Jim Donches regarding a multi-year contract award, ARPA Funding Management Consulting.
Alderman Camau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award a multi-year contract to hire a consultant to better understand the new rules and regulations and how they apply to the ARPA money provided by the U.S. Treasury to high parametrics in an amount not to exceed $200,000. Funding through Department 183 Economic Development, Fund 53142 Consulting Services/ARPA Grant Funding.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication from Larry D. Goodrow, Chief Executive Officer of Penetech Corporation, regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholder and proxy statement, the proxy card, and annual report to the sole shareholder.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the sole shareholder increase the number of directors from 11 to a full slate of 13, and to elect the following individuals to the Penetech Corporation Board of Directors until their successors are elected and qualified. C. George Bauer, Amy Marie R. Corvo, J. N. Lustig, John M. McGrath, and Preston J. Stanley, Jr., to the Penetech Corporation Board of Directors as Class A Directors each for three years' terms until their successors are elected and qualified, and elect Sarah Pillsbury to the Penetech Corporation Board of Directors as a Class C Director for a two-year term and until her successor is elected and qualified, and to authorize the mayor to transmit by proxy card the vote of the sole shareholders to the Board of Directors of Penetech Corporation.
You've heard the discussion. Is there, I mean, you've heard the motion. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition by Etchstone Properties, Inc., for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code for Thompson's Preserve Condominium.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to recommend granting the petition for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code, Thompson's Preserve Condominium.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Petition from Etchstone Properties, Inc., for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code, the Alcove at Walden Woods Condominium.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to recommend granting the petition for full waiver of impact fees for public school facilities as authorized under Section 19085 of the Land Use Code, the Alcove at Walden Woods Condominium.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections. There is none. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 16, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the March 16 and March 23, 2022 Joint Meeting on Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the March 21 and March 28, 2022 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the March 23, 2022 Task Force Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the reports of the March 29 and April 14, 2022 Penetech Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. And there being no objection, I will declare the report of the April 4, 2022 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments? None. Unfinished business resolutions.
Third reading of Resolution R. 22008, establishing an expendable trust fund for 14 Court Street expenses funded by appropriations.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 22008, and I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, this is just establishing a holding place if monies were appropriated to cover 14 Court Street. There are no funds being appropriated at this time, so it's just establishing an account. And it is, it would be unique to this building as opposed to other buildings, so I'd recommend final passage.
Discussion on the motion for final passage. Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. As I stated in the budget committee meeting about this resolution, I'm not in favor for a couple of reasons. I think that, from what I could understand, that there's a problem at Court Street, and the problem that I understand it to be is that it doesn't make money, it doesn't, it loses money over the past few years. I don't see how this resolution solves that problem. There are two trust funds right now that are set up on page 234 of the city budget. One is Trust Fund 7078 for city buildings, and then the other one is 7082 Downtown Improvements. Both have, I don't, at the time that this was published, there was a sizable amount of money in those trust funds. Right now, in this trust fund, there's zero. If we were to take all of the revenue that is generated by Court Street and place it in there, it would still not be enough to even cover the expenses. I think that Court Street has a vital interest of the city. I think it serves local arts. I think it's also, from a historical point in the city, it's important. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't do anything with 14 Court Street to make it viable, to make it an asset, to make it appealing for more people to come in. I just don't think that this resolution does that. I think by perhaps coming up with a solution to first figure out how we make that building viable, and then to see what legislation we can pass in order to carry that plan forward, that's something I could support. This I cannot. Thank you.
Welcome. Alderman Lopez.
Well, I agree with my colleague that this legislation doesn't fix all the financial issues that Court Street has faced over the years. I do think it's a necessary step towards doing that, and the solution of trying to divert funds into a revenue fund that is used for multiple purposes and not specific to Court Street Theater allows and has allowed administrations to move money in and out and not to respond to the needs of the building when it is, when it is in need of things like roof repairs, or electrical work, or what have you. And that has been the problem with the building in the past, is that it's not maintained from year to year by the administrations that oversee it. Those are elected bodies, the priorities change with the people who come into office, and it's suffered. But despite the condition of the building today, it has been very important to many, many families and many, many community organizations and Nashua's arts culture, and it still has a very vital role in terms of supporting community arts versus the consumer-driven performing arts that the National Arts Center might drive, or that the Keefe Auditorium, large audience scale with orchestra pit, might have. Court Street Theater is more flexible, it's smaller, and it has specific purposes. It also has, because of its size, the opportunity to be more financially stable than it has been in the, in the past, and Mayor Donches's administration has taken steps forward, including having Liquid Therapy replace the empty parts of the building that were not generating any revenue and were going to waste with something that does generate revenue. So as, in addition, there are office tenants as well from different performing arts organizations that pay rent as well, and as with any landlord, when you're paying your landlord rent and you're seeing your building fall into disarray, you kind of want to know what the landlord is doing with that rent, and in this case, unfortunately, your landlord is a bunch of politicians, so they're doing whatever they want or decide to do with it. So having a special revenue fund, I think, is a first step towards admitting that we even plan to be diligent about this building, and that we are willing to try to create a sustainability and a feasibility plan. That signals to organizations that are willing to invest in it and support it that we're serious about it. There's been public comment about just demolishing the building altogether, as though any building past a certain age has no value in it whatsoever, and that it's strictly a financial exchange. But there are many buildings in Nashua that have historical value, and there are buildings that are operated by the city that aren't operating for the purposes of generating revenue. If we can have our cake and eat it, if we can make Court Street something that is revenue-neutral, I think we should do it, but I don't think we're going to be able to do it if we don't at least start making it very clear how much is going in and how much is coming out of that building, and while this, this single act of legislation doesn't do that, at least it's a start, and it is something of a commitment. Thank you.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo Alderman Sullivan's comments. I, I don't think it solves a problem. I understand the first step argument. I believe that's a considerable argument. My, my issue is, we have a strategic plan for the library. The Arts Commission just had a strategic, strategic plan. I would prefer to go that route with this particular building. If we want to keep it, and I'm not saying that's a bad idea, I think we should keep it, let's develop a strategic plan so we know what money we're going to have to spend in the future, rather than throwing good money after bad or bad money after good. If we're just, you know, patching holes in a dam, let's look at the entire structure and then come up with a full-phase plan to take care of all of the issues ongoing, step by step, because we could put ourselves in a position where we create a fund that we then vote to put no money in it. So then it could be like an empty promise because we have this fund, but we're not really contributing money, so it doesn't really matter. I'd rather come up with a really strong strategic plan, know what money we need to rehab it, and then go after that, rather than hoping we put money into a fund in the future and hoping it solves the problem when it may or may not. Thank you.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. So I, to echo Alderman Lopez's comments, I don't think this is there to solve the problem. It's the first step to getting Court Street to be self-sustaining. I don't think it is now. Last couple of years, obviously COVID, they haven't been able to do anything. So I agree that the last couple of years have not been good, and that will take a while to even get this up and running, but I think somebody that spoke to us in one of the committee meetings said that there was money there, and it was taken away, promised, and it was taken away, and if we don't have something that keeps it there, and it's not going to be, at least at first, a ton until we can try to get it more profitable, but if, if you say that, oh, we have money in other places, the thing is, is we don't usually then, something else always comes up. Something else always comes up, and that money goes somewhere else, and this is a way to try to put some money in there at some point to keep it within 14 Court Street. The three different venues we have are three different arts venues. They're not the same, they're not interchangeable. Everybody keeps thinking that one can replace the other. It's not the case. They're all different, and this one's been important for a lot of people for a long time, including some of the people on this board. So I think it's important that we at least take that first step to try to get it, and then we could still make plans after it to make it more sustaining, but we have to take that, as Alderman Lopez said, that first step. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I kind of want to, I hate to repeat any of the things that have already been said, but one of the, the comments that have been made about 7078 city buildings trust fund, I think the director administration had commented on that, that that was primarily meant for like City Hall-type buildings. It has been used for other things, such I think the Public Health Building and so on, and our Downtown Improvement Fund is just for that. It's, it's for the downtown improvement and so on, so I don't think that falls within the same venue that we're thinking of, or I should say realm, or whatever, that, that we would look for 14 Court Street. And, and I agree with what Alderman Cathy said about a strategic plan. I always like to see a strategic, strategic plan going forward, but I I always like to see a strategic, strategic plan going forward, but I don't see where one precludes the other. I don't see why we can't at least set up this trust fund, look at it in a way that we can actually see revenue coming in. I agree, again, with what Alderman Cathy had said about that we could end up putting nothing in it, and we've set this up, so that's exactly what could happen. Nothing could go in it. I would think that would be a shame if we did that, because we know work needs to be done. I would like to see all of it go in, but we did leave it open for that possibility. So he is absolutely correct when he says that zero could go in. I would hope we would not do that, but that is, that is a real possibility. When we had, as, as Alderman Tebow mentioned, when we had someone who came forward and had spoken about this fund, how a lot of people put in good faith money, and suddenly that money disappeared. It disappeared either into the general fund or something, but no work was being done. I can't even imagine what the people that are renting there and so on, whether it be the Peacock Players, whether it be the Symphony, whether it be little art community that's down under liquid therapy, how they must feel when monies that they thought were going to be going to, to take care of this, and then when they need something done, being told by, you know, city leaders, sorry, there's no funds to take care of this. At least if we started this, we would be on the right path. And as many of the people have mentioned here, this is just the first, the first step towards doing that. And I think, I'm glad that Alderman Cathy did bring up the strategic plan. I think that's something that we should be moving forward, and we should be asking, whether it's Director Cummings or someone of that, that we do have a strategic plan, how are we moving forward? What are the things that need to be worked on? How can we do that? What, over five years, two years, 10 years, or whatever? One of the things I do want to mention is that many years ago, this building was run by a, a, a nonprofit, I believe is what it was. It was in a National Arts Commission, not the same one that exists now. I think that's what it was called.
Nashville Center for the Arts?
Nashville Center for the Arts, exactly. And for whatever the reason was, they went defunct. I don't believe that they were responsible for this money and so on, but, so, other groups have tried to come in and done it, do it in a variety of different ways. I think the city has embraced the arts, and I think that, as to Alderman Tebow's comment about three venues, we have three venues with four very different and unique organizations. We have Actors Singers, we have the Peacock Players, we will have the Performing Arts Center, we have the Symphony, all four different ones. I'm going to be going to the Actors Singer, I think it's Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, that'll be held at the Keith. I go to the Peacock Players regularly. I look forward to the Symphony, I look forward to the Performing Arts Center when it, when it does open up. So to say that we, you know, we have a lot here, so why bother? I think it's important to bother. I think it's important for us to show these people that we care enough and that we are going to set up a fund, and I would like to see it all go in there, but that would, for another day and another board. Thank you.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I agree with a lot of the comments made by my colleague from Ward Nine, and with respect to what, some comments from my other colleagues, you know, about possibly hanging the building out to dry, I don't agree with that. I, I feel like if we don't set up this trust fund, that doesn't preclude us from still doing the things that they might need us to do. There's nothing to stop anyone on this body bringing forth appropriations requests and things like that. If there's projects that need to be done, there's money in other funds, like Alderman Sullivan had mentioned. And my fear would be, if we do set up this trust fund and we allocate this money, I mean, it is a, a trust fund to be funded by appropriations, so I assume at some point we will be appropriating money into it. But then that does tie our hands, where if something does come up, like has been mentioned, and that money needs to be spent somewhere else, I like the idea that all of the money that we spend is, you know, debated, vetted, approved, and not just, you know, put into a fund with only one purpose, because it might not be the most important thing to do at that time. If it is, then when it comes before this body, we'll discuss it and we'll approve it, whether we have this trust fund or not. So I, I don't feel like if we say no to this tonight, it's going to lead to the building falling into, you know, disrepair. We've already made significant improvements on the building already without having this trust fund, so there's nothing to stop us from doing that again in the future when things come up that need to be addressed. So I, I do agree that this might seem like a, a good first step, but I don't know that it's solving the problem that we think that it's solving.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to put my hat on, a construction helmet or whatever, and speak basically as Chairman of the Committee of Infrastructure. To the new Alderman, I don't know who changed the name, but Infrastructure, the old name was Lands and Buildings. And when you look at 14 Court Street, I'm in favor of this. We've owned that building for an awful long time, and I think we all can sit here and shake our heads and say, the fact that we're holding this discussion, whatever we were doing, and if this motion fails, because whatever we were doing in the past wasn't working, and failing this motion will continue us down that path of not working. This will provide an expendable trust for profit that is, you know, comes in that they basically seek. So what happens at 14 Court Street? It's used by many other different type of organizations that come in, they rent the space and different things, and so that money and everything generated will stay within the building that it's appropriated to. This may also in the future, if that, for the arts community, if there's granting, it may establish an account with this expendable trust that perhaps maybe future grants could perhaps go into. But anyways, it's a step in the right direction, in my opinion, to make this work. Now, we heard some, you know, citizen, and they were correct, you know, right now, there is cabling. That used to be adjacent next door to the, when it was the old fire station, and then after they closed the fire station, it was the hub. That's where basically, if you think, just like a junction box in electricity, that's where all the fire cable basically comes in. It is still there, it can't be moved. But if we're going to sell that building, it is going to be moved, and right now, we're reaping the benefits of the cost by not moving it. So if we niche the 14 Court Street, we're going to have to pay to move that particular cable. And then looking at Keith, Keith is a wonderful auditorium, it is a beautiful spot, but where's the individual rooms that some of these organizations currently now enjoy? And if you walk through 14 Court Street, you would see them, the different suites and stuff like that, that a lot of these arts communities use. There's nothing at Keith that has that, it's an auditorium. And then the other thing is, that heating system to Keith Auditorium, I think Alderman Dow could say in his knowledge of the school department, that heating system is tied into the existing Elm Street School building heating system. So if Elm Street gets to be replaced, don't rely on Keith, because we're going to have to solve the heating issue somewhere in the future. So right now, what is the safe bet? I guarantee you, by supporting this legislation, your son will come up tomorrow. Okay? It's not really going to mean really a heck of a lot. It's just going to mean that the funds that they generate is going to sit in their account and that they'll, they'll be able to access it. Now, can they do so wildly without abandonment? No. We still have committees. We have the Finance Committee and the Budget Committee, that many of their expenditures are going to have to come in and to be approved. It's basically the same thing that occurs right now. This is why I say the sun will come up tomorrow. Sounded like a little orphan Annie, but the thing is, all this will basically do is give some organization to something that needs some organization, because what we have done in the past most certainly hasn't worked. This is a fresh step, and I'm going to support this. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. You know, we keep saying the word problem, and again, we, no one's ever said this is going to solve the problem. It's going to help keep those funds, at least within the building, if we appropriate them. And to say that, you know, we'll just appropriate whenever, you know, we need to, is not look, is, is not looking at the past. It's saying our board is better than every other board that we've had in the past, that history will never repeat, and the boards that go forward, right? We're not all going to be here forever, so if it was done in the past, that money was moved from there, that should have been appropriated there, then what's to say? We won't vote against that, or somebody else won't vote against it in the future? You know, that's taking a gamble. It's what Alderman Clemmons is doing right now in Vegas, taking gambles, right? And in his words, his words, because he said it in the committee meetings, and I think a lot of us ran on this word, transparency. It tells us where that money's going. That money that was there before, no one knows where it went or why it went there. This is another act of transparency. The money comes in through the 14 Court Street, and we may or may not appropriate some of that money into this account, so we know where it is. And I think, I ran on transparency, it's one of the words I used when I was running, and I'm, I believe it, and I think Alderman Clemmons, who supported this and is the one that endorsed this, put it out there, believes it as well. So again, I'm, I'm going to support it, and I just wanted to throw that word out there, transparency. Thank you.
Welcome. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes, maybe, may I call a roll call on this vote?
You bet. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
No.
Alderman Cle?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
No.
Alderman Dow?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moshe?
Yes.
You have nine yeses and three nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 22-008 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of Ordinance O-2210, amending the land use code by adding provisions regarding synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking device sales and lounges.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, I'm sorry, I'd like to, motion for final passage of 022-010, amending land use code by adding provisions regarding synthetic nicotine and electronic smoking device sales and lounges. And if, if I may speak to it?
Alderman Cle?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I've given this same talk two times before to the Planning Board and to P E B C, and not much really has, has changed, but for the board here, I'd, I'd like to speak to this. This came about because of a, a vape shop opening close to the Adult Learning Center. I want to preface that with, both parties have tried to do everything they possibly could to mitigate the secondhand smoke going over to the children who, whose daycare and play yard and so on abut that building. But because of the location of that building and so on, it was impossible to do. They couldn't put up a large enough fence, they couldn't put trees or anything else like that that would stop anything that from coming through. The owners of that property really have worked very hard. The Adult Learning Center, when they found out about it, tried to, I guess, kind of stop this. I, I was not at those meetings, so I can't say exactly what was said, but they did try to stop it. And because it met all the criteria within the city, it passed. It, it's a legal operation, it was legal to be there. So this kind of came as a conversation and a discussion. The, the main thing with here was that we want to not stop this type of business from coming in the city. I, I, we do not want to do that. But what we want to do is we want it stopped to be within 1,000 feet of a school, a youth service organization, et cetera, that, that type of, of building. They said with 1,000 feet. We did give the Planning Board the ability to give an exception or exemption if it did not abut that property. So for instance, if this particular property was in close proximity within the 1,000 feet, but say that their two back doors were kind of at each other, anybody coming out of the front of that store and possibly smoking and so on would not have any effect. So if that, that business could show that they had no negative effect, they could be within 1,000 feet as long as they did not abut. And abutting is often asked, well, what exactly is abutting? Abutting is property lines touching or directly across the street. That is what an abutter is. So that's basically what, how this came to be and, and so on. There's also another provision that says, like, business within 1,000 feet, and that's so that we don't have a string of these types of, of businesses coming through. One of the, the comments that I, I make each and every time is that, when I was at the Planning Board, someone asked me, I, I don't know if they asked me or if they asked Director Sullivan, is this kind of a knee-jerk reaction to what happened? And you want to say no, but the truth is, not a knee-jerk reaction, but a reaction to it is the absolute positive thing. One of the things that I find is that we create laws and we create rules, oftentimes, sometimes to stop something from happening, but oftentimes as a result of something happening. So for instance, right now, D C Y F in, in Concord is now going to amend their covenants and their contract basically with bordering states like Massachusetts, so that we don't have another case of what happened to the little girl Montgomery, where that conversation didn't happen. It hasn't been changed in 65 years, I think is what it was, or, or something closer to that, something extraordinary. So yes, we do sometimes, when a problem arises that falls within the letter of the law, we have to change the law to make sure that that doesn't happen again. And that's exactly what this is doing, is it, it's trying to stop that from, from happening. And as I said, we don't want, like, type of these, these companies being side by side and creating an auto mile of, of vape shops of, of some sort. Another thing that I want to bring up is that this is, the majority of the business has to be this. It will not affect gas stations, who might sell vape products. It will not affect convenience stores, who might sell vape products. It has to be a primary source, primary use of that type of, the electronic smoking device and, and synthetic nicotine. In summary, basically what this does is it takes the current land use code, I think it's 137, and changes it from what is now just tobacco and tobacconist, and it adds these different parameters, something that didn't exist when that land use code was done. I think at one of the, one of the meetings, someone had said, well, what about marijuana and so on? That's another discussion for another day. It would not affect a medical store from opening up next to it, because that's a whole different type of, of venue. It doesn't, this does not affect opening up next to hospitals or doctors' offices, even if it's a children's one. It does not affect if a McDonald's were to open up and they've got a play, playground in it, because the, that particular business is not primarily children and youth service organizations. I'm, I'm sorry to go on, but I'm just trying to dispel all of the different questions and comments that have kind of come up through these last two meetings. I think it's a, you know, obviously I'm one of the main sponsor of it, and I do think it's a good plan. It's not completely 100% of those that had wanted to, that had wanted this to go, to go through. It's not exactly what they wanted, but it's a compromise, and I think it's a good compromise. We're not hurting any of those businesses, and this does not affect that business that already went in, just to let everybody know, this does not go backwards. It only goes forward once it's signed. And having said that, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, Madam President. And I do see that Director Sullivan was able to make it, we weren't sure if he was going to be able to get out of Z B A. So he may be able to answer any other questions.
Motion is for final passage of Ordinance 22-10. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 22-10 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R-2227, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $3,700,000 for the replacement and upgrade of radio communications equipment.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cle, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing from May 23rd, 2022.
First reading of Resolution R-2228, authorizing the City of Nashua to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the City of Manchester regarding a welfare software application.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, Alderman O'Brien, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Finance Committee. assign that to the Finance Committee. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance O-2212, authorizing a stop sign on Garden Street and establishing a portion of Garden Street as a one-way street in an easterly direction.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Camo, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and Alderman Cleese. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure.
First reading Resolution, excuse me, first reading of Ordinance O-2213, updating the addition of Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure used by the Board of Alderman.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cleese, Alderman Lopez, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Timmons, and I'm already sponsoring. Okay, so, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion if I am in order to suspend the rules for a second reading of O-22-013.
Motion is to suspend the rules for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Second reading of Ordinance O-2213, updating the addition of Mason's Manual of Legislative Procedure used by the Board of Alderman.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of O-22013, and may I speak briefly to my motion?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes. We were very fortunate to receive new copies of Mason's. Many of you have it on the desk. This is the current version, and it'll assist us in our legislative procedures. So, I urge you to pass this. Thank you, Madam President.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
I was just curious. So, did we have the other Mason's Manual edition that we had, specifically identified by ordinance, or? Okay, so the idea is we're, we're updating it, so that everybody knows, this is the version we should read, so they're not confused as to what pages or wherever.
Correct.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep. Anyone else? Alderman Jettie.
Yes, through, through you, Madam President, if I could ask Corporation Counsel a question about the effective date of this ordinance? Do I have to read this tonight before we can proceed, or?
Yes.
Attorney clerk?
Bye.
I'm not 100% sure I heard or understood the question.
So, my, my question was, when is the effective date of this ordinance, and does that mean that we, does that require us to read this new edition of Mason's before our next meeting?
Mine is in large print.
Yes, we do have it effective upon passage. We could put the date out, um, two weeks if, if desired. You know, I'm not, I don't think substantively, there's probably a lot different. I, I did check to, uh, see if Mason's had indicated, like, sort of, what, like, what the differences were with this new edition. And the editor, well, the publisher of it has made a little, a brief list, I can read you, where they say, here's what's different in the 2020 edition of Mason's Manual. They say the use of certain words were changed for consistency, sections about remote participation were added, the section about legislative privilege and immunity was rewritten, the section about the enrolled bill rule versus the journal entry rule was reorganized, more internal cross-references were added, parliamentary manual citations were reviewed and updated as needed, case law from 20, uh, 2009 to 2019 was reviewed, and case citations were updated as needed, and the index was updated. So, I, you know, amendments to make it more modern and updated, but I, I doubt that the very basic rules that the board tends to utilize have been, are changed in any way.
Okay, thank you. Would, would it be possible for you to distribute that memo to, that you received from a publisher?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I know, um, the older version, we had a couple extra copies, I believe, at the City Clerk's office, that were available to the public on request. Do we have extra copies of this, if anybody wants to check it out and review it?
The new one?
The, the old one, we did. I'm curious if we got enough extra copies of the new one to make that available as well.
I'd have to defer to the City Clerk.
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Was there, Alderman Lopez?
I was just going to point out that this one is stamped and labeled, so I assume everybody else's is, and we probably should give them back at the end of our term.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lopez.
We have to give back the old ones? Madam President?
Well, we're not using the old ones anymore, so.
Okay.
If you have it and you're able to turn it in, that's fine. Okay, motion is for final passage of Resolution 2213. Further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
First reading of Ordinance O-2214, no parking on the east side of a section of East Tunsil Road.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Cleese, Alderman Camo, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Committee on Infrastructure. Period for general public comment. I have two people signed up in the chamber. Denise Musolio, Mussolini?
Musioli.
Musioli, thank you. Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes.
Thank you.
So, I'm, I know that I'm a day late and a dollar short regarding the disc golf course at Roby Park.
You need, you need your name and address for the record, please.
Denise Musioli, and it's 6 Midhurst.
Thank you.
Okay, I am, I am an abutter to Roby Park. So, I have three main points. One is safety, two is environment, and three is, I'm going to question the process that we got this approved. I don't know if everybody here knows, a disc can fly at 40 miles an hour to 70, with the record being 80 miles an hour. They can fly up to 400 feet. What do you think's going to happen when I'm walking my dog down that trail and somebody's not paying attention? A little kid's going to get hit playing baseball. I have on the Professional Disc Golfers Association testimony from people where they've knocked people in the back of the head, knocked them out, bloody them, broke their nose, things like that. These are from golfers, so they're not from people that don't like disc golf. I, I don't care one way or the other about disc golf, but I do care about my safety. There's people behind there that walk their dogs, there's elderly people, there's herring and pia people. Where we live in the condos, people let their kids play on the edge of the woods. So, where they're putting the disc golf basket, and they're cutting down all our trees, there's a good potential a kid's going to get knocked in the head with one of those. And, and even a professional, his disc can go awry and harm somebody. Okay? So, there's a good potential, if you look up the National Institute of Health, the good potential that there's going to be head injury. Is everybody willing to take that risk? Because I'm not. I want to be able to walk my dog and not worry about getting knocked out, or having my dog get injured. Okay, so that's one thing. I'm an animal lover. They're ruining that environment. We, in Nashua, we don't have many wild places left. I've lived here since 1960-something. And I, I will fight till the day I die against further destruction of habitat. We have, behind where I live, we have bear, bobcat, fisher, raccoon, and so forth. There's a lot of people that use those trails. And, and I'm telling you right now, which are right from injury, really bad. They, they could, you could hit a car or whatever. Secondly is the parking issue, which I have brought up to the mayor before. I have photographs, if you folks want to look at them. I live at Oak Hill, there's no light. I live across from the fire station. On a Sunday, you have the Little League tournaments, parking up both sides of the street, you got cars traveling, and then you have a fireman out, fire engine that needs to get to a fire.
Thirty seconds.
And guess what? There's going to be a problem. I'd like to work with people, I'd like to send a proposal to you all about some safety things. They should have, um, how are they going to stop us from using the trails when they're using the disc golf? Are you going to shut the trails down completely, so we can't use the trails? That, that's a big issue. It's just a big mistake. They're cutting down live vibrant trees, they're, they're infringing upon the wetland. What process was used? How come the abutters weren't notified? No site plan was put up. $5,000 was spent.
Beth Skare?
Yep. Hi, Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. I just wanted to talk about my lovely flag, the Sam women's sports flag, and, uh, the one the mayor had taken down, oh, about 18 months ago. I was able to attend a couple of events with the mayor, the, the Public Health Week kickoff, and the Coffee with the Mayor event. And I was really glad I was able to bring my flag and make a showing. And I was glad I was able to talk to the police outside the Coffee with the Mayor event, and confirm that it's legal to, to be on the sidewalk with my flag. And I just want to let the mayor know, it's, the Boston City Hall flag case is still working its way through the Supreme Court, the U.S. Supreme Court, and I'm looking forward to a ruling that would definitely work, be against the City of Nashua, if my flag doesn't go back up on the citizen flagpole. So, I hope to see the mayor again soon. Thanks, bye.
Thank you. Seeing no one else? Remax by members of the board? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ordolano?
Okay, no problem. Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Couple things. The road project that you looked at yesterday and bonded, I think, to do the next five years. Terrific, I, you know, the road project, I think, is a very nonpartisan issue. But I would ask you to be mindful of the patching and the cutting into roads that's going on in this project. You know, there's been a lot of questions raised about proper cut-ins and patching done on roads when we're spending this amount of money, and we're not doing the proper patching. Hall Street's got some beautifully well-done patching done, when they've had to open a road that has been paved, or even due to paving. And there's been plenty of studies by the DPW Department regarding the consequences of cutting into freshly paved roads and then having to patch them. And if the patches aren't done well, that you affect the life of that road by 30%. It's really significant. Go out on Broad Street, you see five or six patches between Coliseum Ave and Broad Street School, that are really exceptionally poorly done on a newly paved road. We spend millions on that. Go down Hall Street, and you see beautifully done patches. They're done by two different vendors. You know, if, uh, let's say, Penachuck does some of the cuts, their work might be of a different quality for patching than, let's say, Liberty. We need to get consistency and compliance with the patching process, because we're spending an awful lot of money on these roads. Another thing, assessing, we know our assessing chief has moved on. I want to make certain that that has no impact on the release of the numbers in July. I am very concerned by the no-bid process done for the $82,000 contract awarded to Esri to create an interface between G I S, the Arc G I S system, and the assessing software. That was a sole-source bid. And I would like to recommend that when the administration brings forth, forth projects that are not bid, that it be marked in the proposal when it's given to you, that this is sole-sourced. I don't believe that should have been sole-sourced. I don't think you had other options. And I had to do a lot of research, but there is a community in Nashua not far from here, half the size with 40-plus thousand people, that put that interface in place. And when I called them and told them we paid $82,000 for a consultant, they were blown away. They said, we paid nothing. We did it ourselves in the I T department. And I'd strongly recommend you just take your time and do it. And we're rushing this for some kind of transparency plan in assessing that is not necessary. If you want us to have transparency, just give us the sales data and a spreadsheet, and we'll be good to go. But I would like you all to be able to confirm that we're on target for July for those numbers. I have to turn in a memorandum to the courts Friday for training for the city regarding right-to-know. I have a lot of reservations that the city will not be compliant with any type of training, because the legal office has given me so much trouble. So, thank you very much.
Okay. Remax by members of the board? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. A few things, just going back to earlier in the meeting. You know, sometimes I, I think, and I ask the question of myself, well, what happens if we do nothing? And I think that that question is applicable to a lot of different things that, you know, whatever we do outside of this chamber, but sometimes it happens, especially with legislation. And I felt tonight that that was a tactic in search of a strategy, or a step in the right direction of a destination where we're not really sure where it's going to go. Time is spent, maybe money is allocated, maybe it's not. Here's the thing. I'll, I want the same outcomes that a lot of you do. And I just want to make sure that what we do, and everything that we do, we can point to in five years and say, yeah, we did that. That's the idea. Second, uh, there, a week from Thursday is my first ward meeting, so if there's anybody on Ward Nine that's listening. New Surles School, 7 o'clock, Cinco de Mayo. Come down, it's in person. I think I said New Surles. We'll have special guest stars, and it'll be fun. Thanks.
Alderman Cleese?
Uh, thank you, Madam President. The, I, I'm liaison to the, the AD PAC, which is the Animal-Dog, Animal and Dog Park Advisory Committee. And one of the things that they had discussed was some of the issues that we have in our parks and our athletic fields and, and so on. In the past, Ward Three has put together different cleanup crews. We did the Shattuck Street Park Lot, I mean, Tot Lot. We did Lock Street, we did Whitney Street. The Toll Street Mission also put together a project to do Whitney Street, and even some of the properties with permission of the, of the owners. That was the Toll Street Mission that did that. In all cases, we were lucky enough, our public works provided us with bags and gloves and so on. So, in discussing this, one of the things that they had said was they wanted to put through a challenge, a ward challenge, to see if the wards want to do this. So, I have two little flyers that I will hand out to each of the aldermen, and I have an electronic version as well. I'm not forcing any alderman to take place in this, but I'd like to see your ward at least take place in it. The challenge is here is to pick a park, a tot lot, even an athletic field, if you think that that would be good enough. And let's all work together to take one and clean it up. That would be nine locations within the city. Citizens do want to help. I can tell you that Ward Three not only brought people in from Ward Three, we had people from Ward Six and Ward One, they came and helped us. We advertised and so on. So, why the two flyers? Well, the one flyer that I have here says, contact your alderman, and I, I give the link to the list of the aldermen. The other one says to contact me. The AD PAC Committee wants to help and work on it, and I've spoken to parks. And one of the things that we did say was, pick any day that you think would work for your ward. Pick whatever park you would work for. I would not pick Mine Falls, simply because they have their own little group that kind of goes through that. And that would be kind of cumbersome. You want to be able to pick something that would work within a day.
Little group, though?
Yeah, they have a very large group that goes through and, and works on, on Mine Falls. I put on this that the nomination period ends on May 15. I know that many of the members, including myself, on, on the AD PAC Committee would also help, we would pitch in. Now, I started saying, and I apologize, because I, I stumbled over my own words. One of the things that parks asked is that we don't do it on a Saturday. And the reason for it is that they will come and pick up all the bags. We do not have to do that. If they didn't come till Monday, that means those bags are going to sit there for two days. So, it's best to do it on a Sunday or a weekday. I think Sunday's probably the better thing. I can tell you for myself, that when we did it in Ward Three, we started between 10 and 11 o'clock on Sundays, and we did it till 2 o'clock. When 2 o'clock came, we were done. Maybe you're going to want to do it less, maybe you're going to want to do it longer. I'll let you all choose what you want. I think we have a lot of parks that need help. So, why the, the AD PAC? One of the things that we find quite often is a lot of trash in these parks, but there's also a lot of dog waste violations, I'll call it, for better, lack, lack of a better word. That means that we're going to get a little dirty, hence the reason for the gloves. I put on here, please bring a poop rake scoop, if you own one. Doesn't mean that you have to pick up that. There are some people that absolutely positively would not be able to, but trust me, there'll be enough trash for you to pick up and help clean. When we did the Tot Lot, we went over clean. When we did the Tot Lot, we went over and we cleaned leaves, we cleaned branches and so on. I'm not asking anybody to do that. Just the trash, just that. We had 27 bags. And believe it or not, it just makes me very disgusted, we had four bags of poop and that was around it. That was because as the kids came off the slides, they were landing in dog excrement. When Easter came and there was an Easter hunt, they were slipping on dog waste. That makes that Tot Lot unusable for our children, which is what it was meant for. So as a community, we got together and we cleaned it. That's the reason why these closed and tot lots now have signs that say no dogs allowed in there. I know that some of the schools, Charlotte Street is one of them, where a lot of the people walk right up to the building, let their dogs poo there, and they don't pick it up. There's a lot of trash. I did speak to Mr. Smith and said we'd like to kind of do something like this. We're also going to work on signage because a lot of the places have conflicting signs. It'll say no dogs allowed in this area right next to the sign that says keep your dog on a leash. So which is it? We are working on fixing those signs so that we don't have this conflicting information. Some of the signs refer to some of our ordinances, and they're wrong and incorrect, so we're going to be fixing that as well. So we're really trying to do everything we can. So at the end of the meeting, I'm going to hand these out. If you want to do it, that's fine. If you don't want to do it, let me know, and I will try to reach out to your ward. But I think this is a great way. Alderman Sullivan is going to be having a community meet and greet where he can talk to people that things are going on. That's a wonderful... This is also a wonderful way to get to know your neighbors, and people want to help. So thank you very much.
Alderman Lopez?
So not to may step on Alderman Cleese's challenges to the board, but a couple of weeks ago, we were invited to participate in the Best Buddies Friendship Walk in Concord, New Hampshire. That will be June 11 at 9:00 a.m. I forward invites to any of the board members who are interested in attending. It's a pretty short walk, it's handicap accessible, it's about a mile long. It's what it calls, it's just Best Buddies Friendship Walk, and it's to support the cause for adults and the inclusion of adults struggling, experiencing developmental or cognitive disorders. So I definitely invite everybody to come. If you want more information, I posted it on my Alderman page, but I also sent an email to each one of you individually, so you're more than welcome. Create your own page, see if you can get your own particular constituents to participate, donate, whatever they're interested in. It's definitely a good cause and something worth raising awareness of. Thank you.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I don't have any major pressing business. I just wanted to thank you for your earlier moment of silence for Alderman Lou and Commissioner Plant. Consider them both friends, and it's just a unthinkable tragedy, so I offer them both my condolences. And to everyone, you know, when you go home tonight, hug your kids, tell them that you love them. You know, it's important, life is short. So thank you.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to remind the public that there is another parking study on May 11 at 6:30 here in City Hall, going over, you know, improvements to or what we want to do for the future of parking in Nashua. And then also, I am the special liaison to the Senior Center Board of Directors. Right now, they are recognizing that they want to be more attractive to more ethnic diverse populations in Nashua, and so they understand that language tends to be a barrier, and so they are starting a Spanish program where they want to start off with some, you know, basic words, teaching members Spanish, so people want to come either be a part of that or help the Senior Center in evolving that program. I'm sure they would love the help. And then, I think that's it.
Alderman Tivo?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple things. So to Alderman Sullivan's point about, you know, I think we do all want, some of us do want the same things when it comes to Court Street, and maybe this trust fund works, maybe it doesn't. I'm hoping it does, and that's why I voted for it. You know, but I've heard other people in this horseshoe say they would sell that, they would bulldoze it, they bulldoze the Kefir Auditorium. And so I can't fully trust that everyone's going to do what I believe or what I think my constituents believe. So I hope we do get the right things, whether it's out of this or whether it's some other thing, or I hope we do appropriate money to the Court Street building when that comes up. The other thing is, the citizen flag pole was mentioned, and I think, honestly, I think we should look at that, and I don't know if that's something that's under our purview or not, but, I mean, I love when we put, you know, flags up there for cultural reasons such as, you know, right now, we've had the Ukrainian one up there, we have the Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day that we put up there. You know, when we do cultural stuff like that, French Independence Day, whatever, I think those are great. What I get nervous about is putting political-type stuff up there, and I think that's when it gets a little dangerous in the community, and that's when I think people start to... That's where divisiveness comes in. No one can, you know, really argue about, you know, French Independence Day, although, you know, I probably had been called some things before when I was young, but you can't really argue about something like that, where you can argue about political statements, and I think it's divisive. So again, I don't know if that's something that we should look at, but, you know, just the comments earlier, I just wanted to put that out there. And lastly, disc golf, you know, I wasn't going to mention it, but it was mentioned in the comments, and I hope that it brings what I think it's going to bring to Nashua. I hope it's a good thing. I personally think it is. I hope there's no injuries. I hope, you know, a lot of the trees that are there stay there for the course, and I hope the trails stay there, and I hope no one gets hurt. I just think it's going to be good revenue for the city. We didn't have to spend money on it or very little money on it as a city, and I hope it's a good thing. I wish it was still in my ward. I lost my parks, so I'm going to have to go join another ward for park cleanup, I guess. But thank you, that's all I got.
Okay, committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow night, April 27 at 7:00 p.m. here in the chamber, is the Committee on Infrastructure, and it's part of our continuing, lack of a better term, our continuing education program. We're going to have presentations from the city engineer, and it's going to be on the paving program. I know those of us that were here at the meeting the other night saw a lot of it. But second, too, is another important part of our infrastructure, and that is parking garages, which we're going to focus on and look to keep those things both viable and if they need any type of repairs and security and what the like. So you're all invited, so hopefully we'll see you there.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, Tuesday, May 3, we're having a special, joint special Building Committee meeting. It's at 7:00 p.m. at Nashua High North, and it's dealing with Franklin Street, and we're having this special meeting because of time constraints to get the things done at Franklin Street so the school can be open next September again. And so I don't believe it'll be a very long meeting, but a very important meeting.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. The cultural connection was canceled yesterday. The committee was committed, canceled yesterday due to no...
Alderman Lopez?
Yes, there will be, on May 2, Monday, there'll be a Special Human Affairs Committee meeting. Regular humans are invited, of course, like the rest of us, but we will be focusing on the CEBG funding, and I'm hoping for some presentations by city departments regarding inspections and code enforcement.
Thank you. I would like to thank Alderman O'Brien for clerking for us tonight and wished Donna and Russ a speedy recovery, and thank you to Attorney Clark for filling in today. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that the April 26, 2022, meeting in the Board of Alderman be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
And we are adjourned at 8:49 p.m. Thank you, everyone.